I'm going to call this Monday night eight, twenty twenty-three Board of Equalization meeting to order. Roll call, Mr. Brett Town.
President.
It's Eleanor Thompson.
President.
And I'm Patrick Crowley. Okay, notice of the meeting was properly posted. We have two properties before the board today that are both, well, one of them is commercial, the other is residential. The first one is the commercial property, B O E, number eighty-eight. This is a property at twenty-two oh one northwest one hundred and thirty-eighth street. Uh, it's the Plaza of Quail Springs, Kestrel LLC is listed as the owner. And is this going to be by phone?
It is. They're both by phone today, so I will dial him right now. This is-
Who is it?
Lucas Quarrie.
Lucas who?
Quarrie.
Hey, Phil.
Q U A R Y.
Yes, Mr. Quarrie?
Yes.
This is Patrick Crowley, Chairman of the Board of Equalization here in Oklahoma County. We have one of your properties, uh, as a, on the agenda today.
Yes, sir.
It's at twenty-two oh one northwest one hundred and thirty-eighth street. It's the Plaza of Quail Springs, correct?
Yes, sir. The At Home property specifically, it has its own parcel there. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And it's At Home is the proper-
That's the business name. The tenant, the tenant name is At Home. It's a retail store for home goods.
Okay. All right. Gotcha. All right. It looks like, uh, the assessor has put a value on this property of eleven million five hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and one. Is that correct, assessor?
Yes, sir.
And that's the same value as last year, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Quarrie, it looks like you're asking the board for eight million. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Tell us what you want us to know about this property.
Well, this, this is our first year review and our, us being the Lloyd tax, so we wanted to take a fresh look at all their properties. So, understanding the value didn't increase this year, but we wanted to look at it anyway. And, um, the main thing we looked at was At Home has two properties in Oklahoma County. Uh, one is this one right here on the north side, and the other one, uh, is a little bit on the west side of Oklahoma City. This one's valued at ninety-six dollars a square foot. The other At Home property is valued at forty-nine dollars a square foot. So that was the first, I don't want to call it red or black, but the first thing made me want to look at this one in greater detail. Initially, without a value increase, I wasn't too concerned about it, but when I saw that it was almost doubled the value of the other At Home, uh, I wanted to take a closer look. So, what I did initially, um, and I, I included a market pro forma there, but my, the main piece of my evidence is on the last page of what I submitted. You'll see, um, some assessment comps there, and I tried to find other larger square foot, big boxy, you want to call it that, retailers. And so, uh, the first comp there, so the first row is the subject, At Home dash number two seven nine, that's the subject, and that, that correlates with the black bar on the graph that's there on the bottom right. Um, the other comps there, two through eight, uh, you'll see that two is pretty far away from the subject. I only included it because it's the only other At Home property in the county that I was referencing earlier, valued at forty-nine dollars a square foot. The rest of the comps are right there, very near to the subject. Um, Target, Home Depot, Best Buy, Lowe's, Sam's Club, and Walmart. And I was trying to find single tenant retailers that had large square footages. You can see the square footage there, um, under the N L A column. But with the exception of Best Buy at ninety-six dollars a square foot, the remainder of the comps were anywhere from forty-nine to sixty-six dollars a square foot. That's what triggered us to file the appeal was that, okay, this At Home property, um, is much higher than most of the other properties throughout the city. Everyone knows, uh, big box retail and the stuff that's been going on lately, so I won't get into that. I'm sure you've heard that too many times, more companies than care for. So, this being what it is, big box retailer, and valued so much more highly than the other properties, I figured it was worth an appeal. Uh, I don't think At Home should be, uh, valued significantly above its peers there. Um, I, I don't feel like this would sell or rent for a significantly higher amount than the others were to go, you know, vacant or were to go for sale. So, I understand there was a, uh, a remodel at some point in the past few years. I think that's what triggered, um, the change. This, this was put on its own parcel in twenty-twenty-two. Because At Home came in, they moved into, I think they combined a few different spaces. There were a few other retailers there before, and they combined it into one single tenant facility for At Home. That triggered a new parcel in twenty-twenty-two, I believe. Assessor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what happened there. And so there was that remodel, um, that may be the, the basis for the higher value, I'm not sure, but when you look at these things, how they would sell, how they would rent, you're going to have to do a finish out for a new tenant anyway. So any of these properties where they go vacant and be rented out would have to be remodeled. So I, I don't think that should be, uh, a driver for significantly higher value than the peer set. So, we looked at this, we saw an indicated value, uh, of about seven million on the assessment comparables approach. Um, giving, giving some justification, the fact that it was a recent remodel, I wanted to ask for a number higher than the median. I think we should be on the higher end because of that recent remodel, so instead of asking for seven, we're asking for eight million. Um, that's kind of the, the base of our appeal. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yes, sir. Uh, do you, do you live here in Oklahoma City?
I'm in Dallas.
Okay. Are you familiar with where that's at, that's At Home at the Quail Springs? Are you familiar with that?
Uh, I mean, not, not to the degree that you are, I'll say that. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert when I'm not. So you obviously know it better than I do, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, just as a port of fact, Quail Springs is probably one of the, uh, most frequented, uh, plazas in the city. Uh, and all of your, uh, comparables appear to be south, uh, and, and not at all close to Quail Springs. So I just, I just wanted to point that out, that that's, uh, curious.
Well, I, I want to make sure we're looking at the same page here. Are you looking at the, the map on the last page?
Yes, sir.
If you, if you see there, there's one At Home property there, that's number two on the graph, that's far away. Um, the rest of the bullets are right on top of each other, right there. So, so three through eight are right there beside the subject. They're all in that, in that development that you're talking about. The only one that's far away is the At Home property on MacArthur Boulevard, and the only reason I included that was because it's the only other At Home, uh, in the county, so I wanted to give you, I just wanted to include it, I thought it, it was relevant because it's the same business, same, same tenant, but all of the other properties are right there, right next to this subject.
Okay.
Are you, are you seeing that on the map?
Well, unfortunately, we're, our, the map that we have is not in color, it's in black and white, and it kind of-
Okay.
Kind of, uh, makes it difficult to say, see exactly where we're talking about.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On the screen.
Oh, okay.
That cluster is, is all but the one. The one on MacArthur, certainly you could say that is a different area, um, probably.
Okay. All the rest of them are where that X is?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, I see the numbers there on that, yeah. I can't see that on this black and white thing. Okay.
Yeah, they're all within a mile of each other.
All right. I thought we were going to give you the color.
Well, yes, this, uh, this was scanned, uh, because we received it so long ago before we made the transition to color.
All right. All right. Uh, anyway, that's just kind of a off-the-wall thing, Mr. Quarrie. I, I was just questioning, you know, what, what was, uh, uh, would look to be not, uh, at all comparable, but since all of them are, except for the one, uh, right on top of each other in Quail Springs, uh, that's, we'll consider that. All right.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Anything else right now? You'll have an opportunity to respond to the assessor, uh, if you want to.
Those who left it, the assessor can feel free to present their case.
All right. Thank you. Wait a minute.
Based on, on, you arrived at the eight million, and you complained about the disparity in the price per square foot, what did you calculate for price per square foot?
Yeah, so I, the indicated value per square foot there in my analysis is fifty-eight. You see that six million nine twenty-eight fifty-seven?
Yes.
So that's, that's the actual indicated value in my analysis. So I've decided to bump that up to, as a show of trying to work, I don't know, trying to be reasonable, I guess, so I, that's why I put eight million, which is sixty-six fifty a foot, basically. That's, you know, rounded eight million, a whole number, but that, that was a, a subjective adjustment upwards to try to say, okay, I'm not going to ask for the median. I understand the point of view that this property was renovated recently to accommodate this tenant, so I do believe being at the high end of the range probably makes sense. Um, that's why I came in at eight million and not six million nine twenty-eight fifty-seven.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the board?
To me, the difference in this, the difference in the, uh, valuations per square foot is really dealing with just the remodels because as I, as I frequent every one of these in the last six months, probably, uh, the only one that's had any significant remodeling is Target among all of those. The rest are pretty much as they were when they were built and constructed, so that, that would be my reason for the discrepancy in evaluation.
And, uh, any other questions for the board of the taxpayer at this point?
No.
All right. We'll hear from the assessor.
Matt Michael. Board members, this, uh, property was a result of a combination, uh, the far east property was a Toys R Us, the middle was a gym, and then that west building was a Hobby Lobby. We combined all those buildings for twenty-two, uh, created its own parcel, um, it gave us an eight million dollar base, and then we had record of a billing permit from the city for four point six million that we went out and worked, and we took a conservative percentage of that just to give, uh, an amount for demolition, uh, costs that may not attribute to the market value, and we only took seventy-five percent of that building permit value and applied it to the added value last year, which were, which is the current value this year. So that only added a little under twenty-nine dollars a square foot for the remodel over the entire building to create this tenant that they have now. My understanding is that other At Home on the south side is, has never been remodeled, not that we're aware of.
When was the billing permit for this four point six million?
That was completed, uh, March of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
So we were, uh, we, uh, didn't add any value until twenty-two, based on the time of year, and, uh, we didn't have any sales from the agent to review, uh, no income and expense other than the pro forma, which were just estimates on the rent rate and, and the expenses. So that is the, uh, indicator of that higher value, and looking at the value comps, I don't know of any of those other buildings that have been remodeled. Uh, press on that, chat, excuse me, press on the, on the, why you didn't get a, uh, why you didn't get a lease? We, uh, in an email between the agent and our appraiser, we did ask for, uh, the income statement from the, uh, from the tenant, but weren't able to, to get it to see what their actual twenty-two income was to take into consideration. So it looks like a little heavy weight on just the comparables, excuse me, on the equity They're not on sales or income or, uh, any discrepancy with the amount that was added for the remodel.
Any other?
No, sir.
All right. Uh, pretty well soft spoken. Could you hear, Mr. Quarrie, could you hear the assessor?
Yes, sir, I could.
Okay. Uh, anything that you want to respond to that the assessor just said?
Uh, well, just a couple things. I just want to clarify, At Home wouldn't have access to, like, income and expense statement as tenants, but, but nonetheless, we were, he, the assessor is correct, that we, the basis of our appeal is the, the equity comps, the testament comps. Uh, so, yeah, that's true. Um, and the one thing that may be a point of disagreement between myself and, and the assessor is that, um, a remodel isn't necessarily, it's not like a dollar-for-dollar value add, right? So like, if, if, if At Home were to go dark and another tenant were, were to go into the space, there'd have to be another permit taken out to bring that space up to the new tenant certifications, right? To, to whatever layout they have. So, these types of remodels and finish outs are going to happen pretty much anytime as a new tenant move in. They're not necessarily value add, they're just making the space, uh, appropriate for whatever new business is moving in. So, and arguably, and you feel free to disagree, but a, a retail property with three different tenants is usually going to command a higher rent than a property with one large tenant. So you could argue that it would more valuable before they throw it out into multiple spaces, um, and before they did all this, uh, you know, taking out the walls and making it, accommodating it for At Home. So, just, I think that's probably the biggest point of contention here is that a remodel on the basis of, okay, you're not remodeling to the existing tenant, you're just changing it from Hobby Lobby to At Home, or whatever these things was, that's not like a value add, that's just bringing it up to At Home's qualifications. If it went dark and a new tenant were to move in, they would do the exact same thing. So, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make here, is that I don't think that the remodel in and of itself should be, uh, complete justification for it being higher than everything else.
Okay.
Did you hear him say he only took seventy-five percent of that?
I, I did hear, yeah.
Okay, so why did you say dollars for dollar? That's not what he did.
Okay, fair, fair point. I wasn't trying to, I didn't want to take a dollar for dollar. My, my point is, well, you heard my point, I won't, I won't go back over it, but yeah.
The other thing, I'm, would you say, um, you need to repeat, um, you said At Home would not have access to income information?
They would have access to the rent they're paying, they wouldn't have access to the income and expense statement. The owner would have access to that, yeah.
So are you here for At Home, are you here for the, uh, are you here for the tenant or here for the owner of the premises?
I am representing At Home, who is the tenant and, and sole taxpayer on this parcel.
So that's your client, and you wouldn't have income information?
I would not have income and expense information, no, but I would, I could request the lease. At Home may or may not give it to me, I don't have the lease, but that is something At Home would have, yeah.
Who pays the taxes?
At Home would pay the taxes on the parcel.
Okay. All right. Uh, if somebody could, has the income information, you're just saying you don't have it, right?
That ain't what he said.
I don't have it. The owner would have the income and expense statement. At Home would have the rest, like, the, the lease, basically. They'll have the rent they're paying, and that's it. Um, an income and expense statement is something that the owner or landlord would have.
Yeah.
But again, nonetheless, basis of the appeal was not regarding any of that stuff, it was regarding just comparable assessment, and more than anything, wanting to have a conversation around, um, not thinking At Home should be significantly higher than the other big box retailers in the direction of the-
Right. Mr. Quarrie, I, I think what the, the issue is, is for this At Home store, say, number ten, there is, there is a profit and loss statement for this particular school, uh, store somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what the, the board was asking for, if that was available.
I don't have it, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure there is one, there's, there's someone has one, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Quarrie, is there anything else you want to tell us?
I don't believe so.
All right. Well, we appreciate your, uh, input. We will, uh, have a letter be mailed out Friday. We meet, if, the board will meet Friday to determine among ourselves what the, uh, we think the value of this property is. We will, uh, then send a letter to you. You'll get it Monday, Tuesday, however your mail service goes, okay?
Okay. I, I just wanted to thank the assessor for taking a look at it, and thank the board members for consideration, and hope you guys have a good week.
All right. You too, sir. Thank you.
All right. Bye.
Bye. Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on B O E number eighty-eight. We'll open up the hearing on B O E twenty-four, which is twenty-five oh nine Island Drive and Edmund, uh, the Capri at Bulgada. Uh, let's see, it looks like the last year was three hundred and ninety-two thousand. Appears that the assessor assessed the value at four hundred and sixty-three thousand. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Four sixty, yes.
And the taxpayer is asking for four hundred and fifteen thousand. Is this by phone?
He is going to be by phone.
Okay.
Down in now, this is William M. Cunningham.
This William Cunningham?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cunningham, this is Patrick Crowley at the Board of Equalization in Oklahoma County.
Yes, sir.
And we have your property at twenty-five oh nine Island Drive and Edmund at the Capri at Bulgada.
Right.
And it appears the assessor has assessed that property, it's four hundred and sixty-three thousand, and you're asking us to, uh, make it four hundred and fifteen thousand. Am I correct?
It's going to be pretty substantial, so I use-
Okay. And-
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
Uh, I believe in my previous role as superintendent and assistant superintendent of Edmund Schools, I've employed Mr. Cunningham as, and, as, uh, for the district to assess property and to give us valuations, and I don't think I can fairly sit here and be a part of the judgment, so I need to recuse myself in this case.
All right. I understand that, we've allowed the refusal. Uh, did you hear that, Mr. Cunningham?
I did. I haven't talked to that in a while.
It's called retirement, Mike.
Hey, there you go. I'm solid.
Okay. It looks like it, uh, you purchased the property in twenty-one for four hundred and twenty thousand, is that correct?
My property?
Yes.
No, sir. No, sir. I bought the land in, I believe it's two thousand and eight, and then had a home built on it in two thousand and eight and early part of two thousand and nine.
Okay. And so you've owned that since it was built, right?
Right. Yes, sir.
Okay. And it was built in two thousand and eight, and what, what did it cost to build that?
It would be about three hundred and twenty-three thousand, including, including land.
Okay. How much land were you talking about?
The land area is eight thousand five hundred and fifteen square feet.
What is, what does that mean? Acres, is it a quarter acre?
It's, uh, give me just a couple seconds.
We have point one nine five five acres.
It's what?
Point one nine five five acres.
Did you hear that?
Yes, sir. I agree.
One, 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 nine, five, okay.
One nine five five.
Nine five five, okay. All right. Tell us what you want us to know about this property, Mr. Cunningham.
Well, it certainly, it, um, well, on the basis, I try not to be long-winded, but I did send a couple pages of looking at it like an appraiser, and, and much adjustments I made and the differences compared to the county. And, excuse me, I believe that there were several differences with county assessor's adjustments, and some of them were relatively minor, which is understandable. Assessors, appraisers can disagree slightly, but there were two or three areas that I believe there were substantial differences, and I believe that their method was incorrect, and one of them is where they determined the actual effective age. And they, one of my comp sales that I used and they also utilized, there, there was a very substantial difference, and that property had been substantially remodeled, as shown on M L S, and then, of course, it's blocked from my house, I haven't known the people that owned it, and there really was minimal difference accounted for by the county assessor. So that would have brought value down. Uh, one column that they, or one area that the market, as I would perceive it, had always adjusted for is bedrooms, and for whatever reason, the county assessor, at least on the assessment of my property, did not even reflect bedrooms. And mine was different than the subjects, uh, excuse me, than the comp sales. That was a fairly substantial difference. And then the, they, on the backside of my property beyond a six-foot fence is a self-storage facility that's been there since nineteen eighty-four. Uh, several years ago, they had assessed that and given it a, I believe it was like, I don't have the figure right in front of me, that a negative adjustment for that negative influence of not quite two and a half percent. On this twenty-twenty-two review, they cut that almost in half, and nothing has changed as far as the self-storages. There's been no other positive or negative influences. I didn't feel that, I felt that adjustment was too minimal for the negative influence. Those were the primary things, Mr. Crowley, uh, that would, and, and why, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one of them, the time adjustment, I did not agree with your made, but a time adjustment, the market, obviously, in, as we all know, in twenty-one, particularly went up substantially, but particularly the second half of twenty-two, it dropped pretty substantially. Uh, one of my sales, the oldest sale, the one that went substantially remodeled, were, in my opinion, they were considerably off on the, an adjustment for effective age difference, where my property has, has not had any updating or remodeling. Uh, the other point was that time adjustment, they wound up taking about fifteen and a half percent up, a positive adjustment, where when I, after I looked at charts and various things, it, it wound up being closer by the December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, it wound up being only maybe one or two percent up, because it went up strong, as I'm sure you know, and then at least in this zip code I live in, it went down just almost as strong the latter half of twenty-twenty-two for a variety of reasons. Hope, didn't mean to be long-winded, but that was, those were the primary three or four factors.
Okay. Anything else you want to tell us at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, we'll hear from the assessor.
So, yeah, the twenty-twenty-three value is four hundred and sixty-three thousand. Uh, that's what we, uh, that's what he remains on. He does request, uh, four hundred and fifteen thousand. Uh, the price per square foot comes out to be a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-four cents. And we're using, we are, uh, using the exact comps that he provided in our three comp report, and we're, we make adjustments for everything to get those characteristics to be exactly like his, and we come out with a median value of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Uh, so that's why we currently support where he is currently at right now. Um, is there anything that you want to add?
Uh, this is an Edmund property, and as far as Edmund goes, and most of the county, the prices are not declining.
Okay.
Well, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who made that statement, but during that time period, in my zip code, for the second half of twenty-twenty-two, they declined substantially.
As evidenced by sales or just your opinion?
No, sir. Same. No, sir, sales.
This is a miss, this is a Mrs.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Pardon me.
That's okay.
Yeah, just for the record, the assessors need to state their names so we'll know who's talking.
Oh, my name is Zach.
Zach?
Yes.
That's all?
Zach, Zachary.
We didn't agree.
All right, Zach what?
Zachary Knapp, K-N-E-P-P.
And you are? Okay, let me just clear up the record here. We got Mike and Zach with the assessors. And it was Zach that made the comment that you responded to.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, anything else from the assessor?
No, just, we, even if there may have been a downward trend, we have to account for everything that happened in twenty-two. So the market was crazy high and even if it was coming down, even into this year, we have to consider everything as of January first. So that's why we currently support where he's at right now and the comps support it.
Okay.
Mr. Crowley?
Uh, yes?
Wouldn't they say we have to adjust to, I'm sorry, what, what they, did they say we have to adjust to?
We have to, everything is current as of January first of every year. So anything after January first does not matter.
Okay, January first of what?
This year, it's this year, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, that, that is correct. And that was the way I utilized my adjustments and reviewed various charts from the M L S in this zip code for, you know, I put very specific home prices in there, home sales, square footage, bedroom, bath, age, you know, very specific. And it showed a very substantial decline, starting about mid-year of twenty-twenty-two, coming down to figures that I show there of a depth of about one and a half percent change from the sale in twenty-one. So again, I feel like your time adjustment is considerably wrong on, on sale three. I don't think the, you made any adjustment per se, or very minimal for effective age. Effective age of this comp, my comp three, I believe it was your comp two, due to all this updating, was considerably superior to my home. And there was almost no consideration of that. There was no consideration for bedroom difference. There was no explanation to me from Zach or Michael about negative influence, why that would substantially be less today than it was three or four years ago. Because nothing has changed in the area.
Okay, anything else you want to tell us?
No, sir.
All right, well, we appreciate your preparation on this property. And we will meet on Friday and a letter will go out as to what value we reached on this. So I probably should have said, is there any comments for the board?
I have one further question. Mr. Cunningham, what effective, what effective age are you giving your house? Because you're disagreeing with the assessor, what are you?
Something, let me look at my chart here. I mean, I'm giving it an actual effective age of the same, fourteen years.
Okay.
Whereas in my opinion, as appraising for thirty-five years, that, that comp three, their comp two that had been substantially remodeled, I gave it effective age, less than its actual age. The actual age was twelve and experience has shown me that at least three, four years was removed from that because of substantial, mostly interior updating.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions of this taxpayer from the assessor?
Anything?
No, sir.
Okay, well, we thank you, Mr. Quarry. Like I said, we'll send a letter out Friday, let you know what we've decided the value of the property is, okay?
All right, thanks for your time.
You bet. Okay, closing hearing on D O E number twenty-four. I'm not sure if it's looking at any citizens or not, Sheila might be a citizen. Okay, any input from anyone in the peanut gallery? All right, any other questions or in front of board? We're not meeting tomorrow, but then the rest of the week.
Correct, yes. So I did want to state again on the record, last week, Brett, you had inquired the assessor about getting kind of a, I don't know what this term to use. It's kind of a simple quasi lesson about how they do their commercial appraisals. So I did reach out to a few folks. And if the majority of board members are going to be there, that does technically count as a meeting. So we would need to schedule that. So if you want to do that, let me know. We can set up a meeting, reserve the room. That will need to be done a few days in advance, but we can do that. I know the assessor has asked me a few times. We are pretty low right now on the amount of appeals we're getting. That's a bad thing. So as of now, this is pretty much our last full week. So we've, from here on, we've just got like one per week. That could change as we know, but just want to let everyone know, pretty much what I have is scheduled. The only thing we're holding off on is Ryan LLC for reasons that we've stated previously, so.
All right, any, any questions for the board?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. All will be favored.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.